Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This mic sounds really quiet for me, so I feel like I'm eating it. We'd like to welcome our visitors this evening, along with those that are watching us online for our live stream. I'm hoping that's going well. I haven't heard any feedback, but just a reminder that we use our mics so that they can hear us and it sounds like some of us are pretty quiet sometimes, so just a reminder there. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Number four, public comments on the agenda item. Please come to the microphone, which is over at this table here, and clearly state your first and last name so we can contact you if we have further discussion. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. Please do not use individual names during comments. And just a reminder that this is a comment area, so there will be no conversation back and forth with the board members. All right, I don't see anyone coming up, so we'll continue on. Agenda item number five, board discussions and comments. We'll start with 5.1, Link Crew. We'll bring up Ms. Chris Haskamp, Andrew Dirks, and Ms. Molly Shink.
We were actually just hoping to play that first.
Yep, and Madam Chair, I have a video I can play now.
Sure.
Would you like that played now, Mr. Dirks?
Yeah, let's just do that first and then Chris can fill in after that.
You bet.
Perfect.
And she, everybody she ever talked to later in her life, they loved her. She was so generous and so giving and loving that it was a tragedy to lose her so young. She was only 73 and it made me and her husband think about, you know, what can we do to honor her? And when I talked to you and I talked to the administration and I discovered this incredible program, I couldn't believe that it existed. I had never heard of it.
So Link Crew is an orientation program that kind of helps 7th graders shift into a new high school setting.
I think back to my middle school experience and how overwhelming it was to transition into a new school building, new teachers, and all of these things, and nobody ever really stopped to like explain it to me. Like, how do you become a middle schooler?
So, we all know it's difficult, but for some of us, it was more than difficult. It was almost, I wouldn't say disastrous, but it was very defeating in how we felt about it. And my sister in particular, she was always very shy initially when she was younger, didn't have a lot of self-confidence, and because she was so tall, she was quite thin. She also had very thin legs. And so the kids, you know, the kids that she didn't know when she came here called her, you know, Bean Hole, Cat Legs. She didn't dare go anywhere. Every time she would go somewhere, she would be like ready for them to pounce on her with all those names.
These 7th graders have an upperclassman that they can reach out to, somebody that's going to guide them and mentor them and be there for them in the hallways in ways that teachers can't.
My Link Crew leader, Gracie, every morning she would say good morning and like give me a hug.
And they were really good at directing us on what to do in the school, how to like function through the school.
My Link leaders would come up to me and acknowledge me, like Eldon and Grace, they would like give me fist bumps and stuff, and that was fun that they like acknowledged me.
London, when we would have like our group conversation, she was just like really open. Like, if someone had a question about something, she'd be totally honest about it. That was really cool.
Dad just like really brightened my mood in the morning and it made me really happy to like know that there are older kids that are like really nice and like know how to help you and like are there for you and not just like looking down at you and like criticizing you.
It just kind of showed that other people, like older people cared about me, you know?
Being homeschooled and then like having to like transition into like public school, it was nice because like they showed you like where everything was and like it was just like helpful to like know where like all like your classes are.
It's just really fun to see them grow into themselves, especially as 7th graders. Like, in the beginning of the year, they're really timid, and then at the end of the year, they like come up to you and they want to talk to you and they want to interact with you. So that's really fun.
We have students meet in our media flex space and we kind of have these gatherings where we talk about different skills that are beneficial as students make their way through high school. And so within those sessions, students will have opportunities to learn about themselves. They learn about time management. They do activities that just work on teamwork and team building and how to communicate with teachers.
So, for her to have been able to have a program like Link Crew, that I think would have changed everything. When I found out that we had some extra money, I knew that that was what we wanted to do in her honor and her name. Just to know you had a sponsor, that you had somebody who was there for you and going to spend, going to pay for the whole year and make sure you got it so you could spend it on, make, moving forward on it.
Aside from those in-school opportunities, have out-of-school events where students have the opportunity to come to the school and be at the school in a different setting. So for example, one of our activity nights was Shenanah Bang and the students had the opportunity to like feel comfortable in this building while playing arcade games and they were living in the arcade setting. And it was just a way that they could see their Link Crew leaders in a different light and see school kind of in a different light.
There was this one time when one of our Link Crew leaders dressed up as a gorilla.
Yeah, talk and it's like big-time teamwork.
It was really fun because we taught Mrs. Sears to how to crochet and it was really fun to get to see her like funny side when she was kind of freaking out and learning new things. That was cool.
But it was also really fun because you just got to be yourself and have a good time and not really care what others think, honestly.
The Link leaders came and talked about like our online presence and our screen usage.
When we did the time management like thing with our like Link Crew like classes and stuff, I think that really helped me last year.
As a family, her husband and I are very honored too to be, be able to say that we're going to be a second-year sponsor so that you can do even better things. And I, and I know that these, these young people made a difference. And so when I met one of the gals that is really important part of your program, immediately thought, you know, I think we should, the family should add a scholarship. So besides, you know, giving, funding the program, my brother-in-law and I decided to give a scholarship of $1,000 to one of the, one of the students involved in the program.
They feel more comfortable at school. They have someone who's experienced it to relate to and feel comfortable talking to. So you have kind of a mentor-mentee situation with the high school students and the incoming middle school students.
And so I've seen a huge increase in just kids' confidence when they go through the Link Crew program.
It makes the school feel better and happier and more lighter when you see your kids around and you say hi to them. It like, I enjoy it and they enjoy it as well.
I thought high school was going to be like really hard, but it like I'm excited for like coming to school every day.
And I love how Project Unite got behind this and they said, you know, we're doing 7th grade orientation, but there's just as much of a transition for the parents of 7th graders. And so they started doing 7th grade parent orientation at the beginning of the year. This isn't just 7th graders. This is like a whole school culture and it reaches into the communities and the families too.
So you're not just, having kids in 7th grade be okay. You're giving, you're opening up a whole world for kids that never would have imagined that they would be a leader.
Link Crew is awesome.
Helpful.
Fun.
Insane.
Helpful. Family.
And opportunity.
Memorable.
Awesome.
Trust me.
Well, this is exciting. Just give you a little quick background on how this kind of came to be. A couple, three years ago, my sister Anne, who was sort of the light of every group and every situation. When she died three years ago, the kinds of, the people gathering that knew her from lots of different places. She gave and gave. Somebody needed a ride home in her community and she took them home. Somebody needed a meal, she gave them a meal. She was all about service, all about giving. And so her husband couldn't let that just sit. He said, "I want to honor her and I want to honor her in her hometown." Now, they lived in Milwaukee area, but he knew how much Crosby-Irington, how much she loved us. And all of you, any Rangers, Barb, we all know how we feel as a Ranger, that there's nothing, there's so much special about Rangers. Tenacity, never giving up, always being able to find a way to do something. And so when I, when he gave me a few, several thousand dollars to find something to honor her and to do some good, I met with Rick and Bill and other administrators, Nikki, and I just said, "What do you need in this high school? What things are, is important that you could use a significant amount of money?" And it was Nikki who brought this program up. And I was shocked because I never heard of it and I'd been around. And so then I met with Andrew and Molly and I, and some of the leaders, and I was just blown away. I mean, as a legislator and an educator and a member of the Education Committee back in the day, this would be a program that I would demand a state fund. Because as a teacher and a substitute, I saw in 7th grade of what happened to kids when they didn't know and they were afraid and they didn't understand and they were scared. And a lot of those kids that, that kind of messed up, those kids that acted out, I felt that it was partly because they didn't know what was going on. They did feel scared and that's why they acted out. So when I talked to some of the students at, while I was preparing this, I asked them how it was. And they said, "You know, the kids that are usually kind of, you know, could get kind of rowdy, they don't." And that as the year goes on, the 7th graders all kind of accept it. Now, you should all know, you know how that important that is and you know how, how sort of rare it is for a whole class to be able to feel like those kids did. So I, I'm, we're doing this because this fits Anne perfectly. Things would have been different for her and as a lot of us between, we went from a Catholic school to a public school. And most of the sections that we got into, we didn't have our friends with us. We were all alone, especially her. So I wanted to, we wanted to say, what can we do to make this move forward? Because when I found out that these two were doing this, they're pretty well doing it on their own and getting, you know, having to train these leaders and get everything organized, I, I said, "Wow." They need help. And when they spend a lot of their year raising money to feed the kids and parents in order to get them to things, as you know, that's the way to get people. And they said they had to spend all year running around asking for foods and this and that. And I said, "That, they shouldn't have to do that. They created it. They're doing it." So I'm hoping, now that the referendum passed, thank the Lord, that this first year full sponsorship, $18,000, that that will give another, kind of sustain it to a point where they don't have to work and, you know, spend all their time trying to raise the money for those expenses. But that you will have another year to see the results of what they have created. I hope, if I were a legislator, as I said, I would demand that we fund this program. And if you are to pursue anything, I'd be at the top of the list of somebody who's going to try to go and push for that because I'm just blown away. So, thank you for the time and I'm so excited to be here for the, this thing because it's not me, it's not political. It's just fun. So I would like to present now officially the funding that will go into the state, the schools' general fund and be a line item under Link Crew. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thanks, Chris.
Oh, sorry. One of my dearest, longest friends here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did a pre-pitcher. That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Wow.
Thank you, Mr. Dirks.
Thank you.
Ms. Shink.
So I just want to remind people that Link Crew was actually one of our budget reductions if the referendum hasn't passed, didn't pass. So that was a positive, one of the positives from a past referendum, so, yes. So we're excited that it gets to continue. Thank you. All right, 5.2, Community Education Strategic Planning Update. This, I believe Andrea is here from the Advisory Board, and then Ms. Getz will come up too.
I'm just here for moral support. Andrea's talking. She's here to help me pronounce last names. Hello, my name is Andrea Gressman and for those of you who may not know me, I have lived in Emily for four and a half years now with my husband Jason. Jason is the pastor at Emily Wesleyan Church. We have five kids. Wyatt, you probably know me better by Creed's mom. So my oldest is in graduate school. My second is in his sophomore year at Oklahoma Wesleyan University. Creed is our third one and a senior this year. Kieran is our only girl and a sophomore. And then you probably all really know Case, he's in fifth grade. We've actually homeschooled for 21 years now and have really enjoyed that. But I think the minute that we moved to town, we were on the ball field and they became Rangers through the sports program. So they've rolled out the red carpet for our children and just made us feel so welcome and at home. And so when Abby asked if I would join the Advisory Council, like what, a year and a half ago or so? Just to try to represent the Emily community, I was excited to do so. My day job, I work for an organization out of the cities called FEN, which is Foundation for Essential Needs. And we have the privilege of working with the food shelves across the state of Minnesota on the border of Wisconsin and North Dakota. So we provide a, we're a free resource to any and all food shelves across the state. So that's really exciting work for me. In this last board or council meeting that we had, it was advised that they select a chair and a vice chair and a secretary just to make the meetings as efficient as possible and to also provide the most support we could for Abby in her position. And so they graciously nominated me and I accepted as the chair. And Becky Packer, Packerina. Packerinan, thank you, is the vice chair and then Aubrey Coop is the secretary. So we're excited to have that implemented. In September, we came together as a group to do some strategic planning for the organization and that was a really exciting time. We did a number of activities. It was led by the MCA Director, Matt DeCosen. DeCosen, yep. Yep. And he was fantastic. He led us through several different activities to collaborate, brainstorm, and just basically vision cast the direction that we would like to see the Crosby-Irington Community Ed Program go in. Through all of that, Barb was there as well, Mr. Ollie, you were there. And it was just a fun time to just get some ideas on paper. And even though there were some, you know, different ideas, a lot of them overlapped and we were very unified in a lot of what we'd like to see for the Community Ed Program. So that was exciting. And then at the conclusion of that, we gave those suggestions and ideas to Abby and then Mr. Ollie and Abby met together and then created what you're, you're seeing up there as the Smart Goal Action Plan for '25-'26. So these were the things that we kind of rose to the top of all the suggestions. The first one was a central registration and payment system. I don't know if you've ever tried to register your child for something, for a CI sport? I have. And so this one was very exciting to me and I think it will be to a lot of different parents. So our goal was just to implement a centralized registration and payment platform by July of 2026 for all community education programs. So this is going to help streamline things, reduce staff involvement on those things. And so you can see the milestones there and we are really excited to have that in place. So then our second goal was to do a rebranding, so to speak, of the, the Community Ed Program. I don't know if you've ever been on Facebook. I have a few times. It does not seem that people know exactly what Community Ed does and what, what their purpose is and who's funding them. And, and so we would just really like to communicate that at a better level to the community. The one thing that I've heard Abby say from the very beginning, even before I came to the council, was that it's really important to her that we are serving birth to 100-plus, right? And everybody in between there. That has been just a consistent statement from her. And, and so that is a purpose of Community Ed. And so just how to do that, there is going to be an assessment done of needs and it sounds like that's happening kind of at a school district level. And so we're excited to see what comes out of that and to see what pieces of that will fit in with the Community Ed Program. So I think just communication, letting people know what Community Ed is all about and then just getting the word out of all the different things that Community Ed works to present. So then the events, there are a few of them. We are working on an annual calendar and that is something that we are excited about. Abby and I met last week to discuss just getting a calendar of all the things that she's already working on. And then this will help us see what gaps there are as well as just being able to advertise and get the word out of the events that are already on the schedule. Some of the big ones are a job fair for spring of '26. And then they're offering to host a homeschool fair. And that is something that's really, that I'm really passionate about as far as bridging the gap between the homeschool families and the school district because there are many things that the school district can offer to homeschool families that I think homeschool families are not aware of. And so if we can, to help bridge that gap, that would be really great. And then to do a community garage sale in summer of '26. Those are just a couple of the new ones that we're looking at. And then the next one is an early childhood program to increase accessibility for that. And the goal is to streamline the registration process and tuition payment system for the '26-'27 school year. I can tell you that many of the folks that were at the strategic planning, the early childhood program was a key goal for Crosby-Irington Community Ed. Just different elements pressing in, trying to just give families the best opportunities when it comes to that. And then is there, is that it? There is a one more? That was it, okay. Okay. So that was...
We've talked about other priorities, but they weren't included with the Smart Goals. So this isn't all we're working on?
Yeah. These were just the, the main ones that surfaced. So we're really excited about the next season for the Community Ed Program and what that is in store for the community. So if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask or...
Are there any questions?
Comments, anything?
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
And your energy and your contributions. I'm so grateful that you're spearheading the way you are.
Yeah, it's my pleasure. So, well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll see you around, I'm sure.
All right, we'll move on to 5.3, Student Representative Report, Bailey and Wyatt.
Perfect, you got it. All right, it is November. We're getting so far into the school year. All right, the first thing I'm going to talk about is legacy. Freshman student Beckett Crane and teacher Sarah Brammer performed at the Legacy Corral for three performances. I was able, I was fortunate to go to one of them and it was mind-blowing. They sounded so good. This is at Brainard at the Franklin Art, wait, no, this is actually at the Gigi Zibi. It sounded amazing. Gabby Van Gruthy, our band teacher, played at the CLC wind performance and received glowing compliments from CLC's wind producer and the band director. So that's always exciting to hear. Whoops. Oh my gosh. What happened? Did I break it? There we go. All right.
They're going too fast. I think back one more. There you go.
Okay, great. All right. And then we did Rachel's Challenge, which was students 7th through 12th grade got together for Rachel's Challenge last Thursday to learn about Rachel's legacy and spreading compassion for others. And I saw a lot of students really moved by this. I think this, this was a really good thing to add to our school district. I mean, there were people crying. It was, it was really emotional for a lot of people and it was, it was really awesome to just see. I love all, all the time when we have like the assemblies. They're almost always like really good things to know, but this one specifically moved a lot of people and you could tell just by looking around, so, yep. And then there was a plant sale. The Environmental Club put on a plant sale on the 15th, selling plants rescued from the backyard greenhouse. Every year, the backyard greenhouse, they get rid of their plants around once it starts getting cold out and they can't really keep them in the greenhouse. So what we do is we take them in and we keep them in Gindy's back room and we nurture them for like two months and then we bring them to the sale. And all the plants are completely free to us, so it's 100% profit for us. We sell them and we raise money for, this year we're raising money for our upcoming Pollinator Garden Project. We have a tiny one at the school. If you've ever seen it, it's kind of like that way in like the little crevice between the two parking lots. And we're planning on expanding on that and also getting one at the Halit Library. And hopefully in the future, getting one at Crest, but we're not sure if we're going to be able to do that this next year. And we were able to raise around 100 and, or $450 for the garden and some other upcoming events we have planned. So that's really exciting. And that's yours.
And then there was a band concert that performed on Friday, November 14th. They played Into the Storm and Greensleeves of Fantasia.
Fantasia.
Fantasia for band. And they got to enjoy dinner with the band at Buffalo Wild Wings afterwards. And then we, our National Honor Society had the opportunity to go to a leadership retreat on November 2nd and 3rd at Craigens. There were two amazing speakers there. It was a ton of fun to go. They had some great messages. And then we had a bunch of time to meet with other student leaders from other districts as well and learn a lot and share ideas with them. And then we also had our Ranger Way Awards for the junior high students. They got to get together to celebrate their outstanding work so far this year. The students got awards for A Honor Roll and B Honor Roll, along with special awards for being a great student and having a great character.
Awesome. And real quick, I can't believe I forgot to make a slide about this. But the Veterans Day Program that one of our students put on, it was Kirsten Nixon, oh my gosh. Mind blown. It was so good. I like, I honestly can't believe that was all just like a student putting that entire thing together. I, yeah, it was crazy. The band and choir sounded great, so that's always, that's always a plus. And yeah, that was just amazing and I don't, I don't know how I could have forgotten to put it on there. Upcoming events, we have a show of Rudolph at CLC, which goes from December 4th to the 7th. A show of the Nutcrab- A show of The Nutcracker at the Franklin Arts Center that goes from December tenth to the fourteenth. All Conference Choir is on the, is on the tenth. Dorian Festival is on the eleventh and twelfth. The band, pep band performance is on the twenty-fifth. The choir concert is on December twelfth, and the basketball game versus Pine City is coming up here on the twenty-fifth. And that's, that's it.
Awesome. I think I saw something about the band concert is the following Thursday. I can't remember where I read that. It might have been in Mr. Barry Fisher's notes.
Yeah, that might be right.
So, do we know what time those are?
I can, I can tell you, because I have a kid in band.
Okay. Do they hold them at the same time, choir and band?
So the band is at one, I'm not sure. No, they wouldn't be at the same time.
No, I mean, like.
Yep, it starts at one.
The band concerts at one on the, that Thursday following, and then the choir concerts on the twelfth.
Yeah, I would guess, yeah. So the band is twelve eighteen.
Didn't have the times.
Yep, one o'clock.
Do we have, Bailey, do we have students in the, in the play Rudolph and the Nutcracker?
We have one student, Colton Armbrist, in Rudolph, and then we have Lauren Larson and Eliza Jacobson are both in The Nutcracker, plus maybe a few more here and there. Those are the only two that I know for sure are in it, though.
Okay. Busy. All right, anything else for the students? Great report, as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, five point four, Policy Review Process. So this is first reading of revision for Policy seven oh three, Annual Audit. First reading and revision of Policy seven oh four, Development and Maintenance of an Inventory of Fixed Assets and a Fixed Asset Accounting System. And the first reading of revision for Policy seven oh five, Investments. Again, this is, we're just doing our first reading. We are not voting on these this evening, but are there any questions, comments about any of those policies?
Most of them just looked like updates with MSBA, so.
Yeah, looked like.
Language update.
Just language, yeah.
Riveting, riveting stuff.
Right. All right, so we'll vote on those more than likely next month as long as nothing is noticed. All right, five point five, first reading of the twenty, twenty-two-six to twenty-two-seven school calendar. I think I'm going to have Mr. Ollie. Is there anything that you want to give us information on, on that? It appears that they were looking at the before Labor Day?
Yep, I would just note that it is a pre-Labor Day start and a reminder that the next two years, the state of Minnesota passed statute that allows school districts to start prior to Labor Day due to that late start. So this is something, we wouldn't need any permission from the commissioner or any, any MDE type approval. The staff feedback was pretty much all pre-Labor Day. This allows us to get out of school on the twenty-sixth of May.
Otherwise, we go to June.
So we had FSMI take a look at this. We had Education Minnesota CI take a look at this. The principals took a look at it. It was thoroughly vetted and reviewed by those that wanted to provide feedback. So our goal is just to have this approved by next, next month's meeting.
Okay.
I, I have a question, Mr. Ollie. Graduation and the last day for seniors seems to be on the same day. When's the last day of class for seniors?
The last day of class would be the twenty-sixth.
For seniors?
Excuse me, the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, and then when is graduation? Because it's showing the same day.
Same day.
Really?
Yep.
Is that new?
That's different than in the past, correct.
Okay.
I think just, I'm guessing to avoid Memorial Weekend, to have, you know, I mean, rather than have graduation the twenty-eighth would be my assumption.
You've had some years where they get done quite a bit earlier, the seniors. Trying to, we're trying to keep that. They have their hours within the state requirements, but at the same time, get them graduated earlier than the others. So that is new.
Okay.
This also, just to note, it does include early releases on the twenty-eighth of October, the twenty-fifth of November, the twenty-fourth of February, the seventeenth of March, the fourteenth of April, and then at early release at the, the end of May. And we did look at potentially moving those to Friday as Ms. Wiesner had asked for, but we stuck with Wednesdays. I think that was the sentiment for most. But we're open to those discussions moving forward, but we did look into that, so. Any other questions about the, the calendar?
All right. And again, even if we vote on it, there's always room to revise it, too. So that has happened. All right, number six, Approved Minutes from October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five Regular Board Meeting and November tenth, twenty-twenty-five Special Board Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on them? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Agenda item seven, informational items, which are included in our packets. Seven point one, we'll go through A through D first. So I just, there was a couple of things I wanted to point out in the AD's report. I think it's important that we point out that they're retiring Hayden Zilmer's quote-unquote jersey. It's, what do they call them?
Singlet.
Yeah, to honor his accomplishments, and that will be during the home quad match on December ninth. So especially for our public, if anybody is interested in that, I think that's a great thing to point out. I did go to the Rachel's Challenge. It was amazing. I was bummed that I missed the Thursday night thing because we had the superintendent thing, but they had a specific program just for adults.
Oh, on Thursday night?
Yeah, it was a total different presentation, but it was, it was so good. Yeah, it was good. They did a great job. And then it looked like we had some good feedback on the play that we just had the Three Little Pigs or whatever, so I was happy to see that we actually got feedback on that stuff.
Oh, for Community Ed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to make that comment, too, Laura. I was really, I, I really liked to see that survey that was sent out and, and from parents that responded to it. And it was, it was, it was excellent feedback and thanks to Clef that, with the generous donation so that it could be put on, and hopefully, I would like to, hopefully, we can work with the Advisory Council and figure out a way that we can make it cheaper for kids to be on the stage, because thirty dollars, if you have a family of four, and they all want to get on it, it's a little expensive, and there's got to be, there's got to be a way that we can knock that in half. And that would be something that we'll continue to work with. And because it was really good, I went to the play and it was really good, but instead of having three little feisty little rats on the stage, it would have been nice to have fifteen, which typically you would have had were either more, it's just as more activity. So I, just something, something to note and, and figure out a way. But it was good. It was good. One of, I, one other thing for activities, I think we need to be careful and, and Mr. Ollie and double-check with Mr. Twig and all that to make certain that, that volunteers that are in our gymnasiums, working with our kids, with our paid employees, have been screened. And I'm not saying there's trouble or anything like that, but I just know that the excitement level is there, and people want to help, and they want to come in, and they want to do this and that. And we need to make certain that, that they are approved as a volunteer. And we have approved some, but I would just like to make certain that, that, that happens for all sports.
Well, that's a good point.
One other thing, one other thing. I guess my niece, my niece, what is it when your niece has child, well, okay, anyway.
Your great niece.
My niece's child, I said, oh, Abby, you're, you're at basketball tonight. I think she's eighth grade. I'm not even sure. And she said, no, I'm in wrestling. I said, wrestling? And she said, yeah. I said, oh, wow. And she said, yeah, there's nine of us as girls, and we have our own team. And Mr. Woods coaches us and everything else, so. I mean, we've got girls, and now we got the guys, so we're, they're going to have their own squad. I thought that was pretty cool. That's new.
Yeah, that is great. Any other question, or comments on anything? No? All right, so we'll move on to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few items tonight. I want to just redirect our attention to the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-six Strategic Planning Balanced Scorecard Draft that I've presented a couple of times now, at a workshop, and then at our last board meeting. At our last meeting, we had kind of left that you were going to just get your eyes on that, and if you had any feedback for me, just to give me the nod and to go ahead and, and begin working with the principals and our directors on collecting some evidence to support and to celebrate some of the work we've done, as well as look for some areas that maybe we need to, to focus on. So again, this was a tool that the administration will be using to rate the specific objectives within the focus areas that the school board had approved when they did the strategic planning here back in two thousand twenty-one. So if there isn't any feedback, or if you do have feedback at this time, I would welcome that, or any questions that you have about the tool.
I think it's going to be a good thing. I just want to make sure that our staff and, you know, when we go through this, that we're honest with it, and we don't want to look really good, even though if we haven't met something, we need to make sure that we put that we haven't met it, because that's okay. It's okay if we didn't. I think we just need to make sure everybody's honest with it and, because we can't move forward if, if we're not honest with it. That's all I had to say.
Any other feedback or comments on the tool?
I think it looks good.
So again, this is going to be an in-depth, comprehensive process, so you probably won't be looking at any artifacts or evidence or any type of formal report probably till even February or March. It's going to take a while to really dive in into fine evidence either way for each of these objectives. But part of the excitement in that process is discovering the celebrations and the great work that's been going on. And also, as you mentioned, Ms. Lee, looking at areas maybe we didn't do as well as we wanted to, and that's okay. That leads me into my, my next bullet item up here is, is the strategic planning, next steps for Crosby-Irington Schools in being able to determine how we would like to work with our families, our students, our staff, the school board, administration, and either refresh, reboot, or completely redo a strategic plan to help carve out the next three to five years for the future of, of our students. As I indicated at our work session, I have begun soliciting proposals for external facilitators as well as putting together an internal process for the school board to consider for options. I've received four proposals so far, and I've begun putting together an internal process as well. And my goal would be at the December eighth work session to present those to you with, with potential costs associated with them, as well as timelines for you to consider. Again, looking at potentially just refreshing and, and polishing the one you have or completely going through another process to, to implement a, a brand-new one. So December eighth, we can have more discussions on that. I just wanted you to know tonight that I've begun receiving some proposals on that, and I'll get you some cost estimates and, and logistics around that. So any questions about that? Just wanted to mention that we did submit for ad space in the Kuyan Lake's Visitor Guide and working with, with Ms. Harala and some students on the design and promotion for CI schools. Fifteen thousand copies will be sent out to the community and as well as around the state. It goes down to the Mall of America and the airport racks as well. So it's going to be a full-page ad with our school logo and a promotional kind of ad to show folks around the state, around the, the area, what Crosby-Irington has to offer. So this would fit under the outreach, marketing, and communication focus area in the current strategic plan. So it's just one other way to get our name out there and to do some branding for CI schools. So once that's published, we'll make sure we get that copy also, everybody can take a look at that, and thank you for your help with that, yeah. Just some more behind-the-scenes updates that are taking place. Our Crosby-Irington District School website is going to be completely redone and reformatted, and families and students and board members and staff can expect that probably sometime in January to be dropped, and hopefully, it helps with outreach, marketing, and communications, user-friendliness, as well as we heard some registration, registration pieces. So trying to mirror some of the strategic plan that's already been done with Community Ed within some of the goals that, the short-term priorities that the school has here. So that's exciting work being done there, and we have asked a local community member, Katie Hakes, to help us with that process as well. So she's dove right in. I know Carmen and her crew are, are helping as well, and it's, it's a big process, but we'll, we'll get it going, so. Mr. Schifler has been invited to our December eighth work session, and he has confirmed that he will be attending. He's going to go through the inclement weather closure procedure with the school board once again. Some talk about the behind-the-scenes work that gets done and some of the, the sites he watches and how he goes about planning throughout the night when we have those types of things, and, and it's coming sooner than later. So just know that will be, that will be an agenda item on your December eighth work session. We are in the process, too, of exploring and looking at some efficiencies with school information systems. Currently, we're using a school information called JMC, and we are putting a steering committee together to look at what else is out there. Again, looking at communications, outreach, marketing for our families, user-friendliness, making things as easy as possible for our customers, and that is our families. So we're looking at ways to make things easier for families to connect with the school district, modernize some of our practices. So we will be putting together a proposed implementation timeline with that. Staff, clerical, administration, business office folks will all be at the table steering that discussion. It will be a big, heavy lift, but once we are able to move forward and get things in place, I think it will be, it will be a very positive thing for our community. So that work is being done behind the scenes. I would also direct your attention to the document with the other CI logo on it, the Ranger Nation Advisory Group. December sixteenth, we're, we're going to be doing kind of a town hall Q and A at CREST. At three-thirty, we're inviting all community members, staff, and any family that wants to be a part of that. Just looking at ways to connect with the community, looking at ways to build more bridges, build trust, transparency, clarity, and consistency. So if there are community members that want to come be a part of that, bring questions, comments, anything that you want to, to visit about at that time. And then we will end that after, or that evening with a tour of the CREST facility. So we held a similar-type event here in November at the district office, and we'll move that over to CREST here in December. So if board members are interested in attending that, we can post that meeting, so everybody would be able to, to attend that without having to worry about any open-meeting type laws. So we can get that posted.
I would recommend just posting it, just in case.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Part of that evening will be also kind of carving out some of the goals of that group and figuring out how we want to structure it moving forward and just talking about some timely topics. And hopefully, that's a healthy process, so.
Did you say three-thirty?
Three-thirty.
Thank you.
It will be in the Pearson Auditorium. Wednesday, November twenty-sixth, we will be hosting Representative Ben Davis and Minnesota Senator Kerry Hitzman at Crosby-Irington Schools. Our student representatives will be the star of the show once again, asking questions and helping lead a tour and getting our legislators into our schools once again to see the, the great work that is going on and to give them some of our priorities and some of our hopes and dreams as they head down in February for their legislative session. They have a lot of work ahead of them as well, and, and we recognize that. But we also want to be partners with, with them in, in the process for helping education and doing everything they can to support us. I already had a nice breakfast with Representative Davis, and he's excited about the opportunity to come meet with our students and, and with our, our staff as well. So one of my transition goals, as you recall from my, my transition plan, was reaching out to legislators and, and building those bridges. And we're just trying to continue that work as we provide gentle, respectful pressure to our legislators to support students at CI. respectful pressure to our legislators to support students at CI.
What kind of, what's the timeline on that, Astrali?
They will arrive at eight AM. And we will do a question and answer. I would anticipate probably forty-five minutes in here, and then probably, you know, another forty-five or so for the tour. Mr. Tullison's always gracious enough to do a tour, and he's very thorough. So we'll make sure that's in place as well. So. And then just encouraging families, school board members, the public to stay up to date, stay involved, stay engaged through social media, through our newsletters, through our CI podcast, our website, which we're updating. Just trying to find ways to make sure we're getting our customers, our parents, our families, the information they need as easy as possible, accessible as possible. That's going to be our goal moving forward. So we're going to need to hear from people about how that's going. And if there's pieces that we can tighten up, we certainly will. But we do appreciate hearing from the community on ways we can do better in that area. So with that, I will conclude my report. entertain any questions that the school board may have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Ollie? Thank you for a thorough report. All right, we'll move on. We'll go to our committee reports. Again, we'll go down the line here. Staff development. We just had a meeting last Wednesday. We have a lot of chatter around professional development. One of the new things that we're chatting about is we have a teacher. Oh, I just lost it. Mentoring program. And now we're looking at possibly doing one for paras. So I think that would be a positive for our paras. I think they would really appreciate that because sometimes when you just get thrown in, it's not very much fun. So. Activities, Mark? Did you get my text? No?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I can update on activities.
I just, because there was that certain thing, that one part in there that you had brought to our attention. So.
Yeah, sorry. I was reading about all the stuff. Yeah, so the activities meeting went really well. One of the things that I had asked the activities committee to look at was just looking at what we're charging people to get into every, all the games. I would say that, you know, at this point, there's, I don't think there's any decision that's been made. I think there's more research that the committee's going to do, and I'm willing to help in any way I can. So that's kind of where they left it at is. I think everybody thought it was a great idea, but I think it's just, and it needs more, it needs more like to be looked at. So that's pretty much the gist, I think. So.
Anything else?
Bill, will we have like an overview of activities that's usually in the board packet at all, or is there will not be one?
Usually, there's not. I don't think, I don't think we've ever.
I don't know. I guess I never.
Had it.
I was always on activities till this time, so I guess I didn't know.
We talked about, Bill gave maybe an update that Wook Gym will be completed hopefully for December ninth for the retiring of Hayden's jersey. And I would think then that's where we would probably have the wrestling match would be in there. So.
That's the hope, I think.
Right? Is that right, Bill? I don't want to spoil your thunder. Cross our fingers and hope that everything goes well. So.
There was one more thing, actually. The Activities Committee was looking at, along with Principal Fisher, possibly trying to come up with a way to kind of honor the Wook Gym. And so I think there's some work being done on maybe having some sort of a, an event to kind of showcase like that gymnasium. So I think there's some things being done with that. So I would expect probably in the next week, I'd say probably, we'll probably see something, what it's going to look like. So it's pretty exciting stuff. And I would just like to say that that was kind of like Mr. Fisher, who was kind of the one that was really, he was the one that brought it up. And so I was very, I was very happy to see that, you know, that he, you know, he's been in this district for only about five or six months, and he's already like invested. Like, like he's the one that says, hey, we need to like, we can't just open this gym. We gotta, we gotta like bring, you know, get the town in here, you know, we gotta do this special thing, you know. So I was very, very happy to hear that. So I'm excited to see what they're gonna do. So.
Yeah, we're trying to decide some sort of contest for the first shot on the new.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Fun.
He also brought, Mr. Fish.
Bill was going to volunteer to take that shot, but.
Granny?
Mr. Fisher also brought up for discussion, not a concern, but on students presenting their identification cards to get into ballgames, or junior high students especially, and a lot so that mom and dad don't just drop them off, and they're here and running around, and they don't have it. So with supervisors being hired that don't know all the students and all that, and some of us, it would make it a lot easier if there was one way that these kids knew that they needed it, or they're not going to get into the game if they don't show it. So he's working on that, too. So that was really interesting to hear that from him.
Yeah, I, my oldest told me it was in the student announcements. So the kids are aware of it.
Are they?
I heard good and bad feedback.
Well, at least you got both of it.
I think it's a new idea. And so you know, like Mr. Fisher said, and I think it might have been Mr. Ollie, too. You know, most of the kids keep them in the back of their phones, you know. So I think it's just getting the kids used to having them. And I can't imagine that our people at the door are going to be that inattentive about like, oh, well, you can't prove that you're a student. So, you know, like, but we need to get them, we should be having our kids carrying something if they're going to be here at the event and to show that they're a student so they can get into the game. So.
Yep, yep. No, that's good.
I have one more note. I did the winter podcast with Mr. Twig today, so he did a lot of overview on winter activities, participation numbers, talked about the new sports, talked about some shout-outs, talked about the Wook Gym. So if anybody's looking for a quick winter update, CI Podcast, it's Activities with Mr. Twig.
Is it out?
It's out, Spotify.
Perfect. All right, Clef, Beth.
Yes. We met and were able to approve three new grants. One to Kristen Harris for a program called The American Dream, which will focus, be a focus for high school students. Supporting alum that will return to speak with current students about real-life experiences and sort of encouraging them to step into the world and dream big. One for Josh Corbett with the Long Lake Conservation Center trip. And this is sort of a replacement for the deep portage trip due to financial reasons. It's a significantly lower cost alternative. So we're switching locations and continuing the program, which is exciting. And then for Marie Gordon, Classroom Books specifically for CRESTS, sixth grade special education for like low readability, high engagement materials, supplying and updating the material that they have. So all good things, beautiful alignment with the vision and the mission, and just a delight. Yeah.
Great, thank you. We heard a lot from community ed, so you probably don't have anything extra there, Barb?
No.
Infinity, I believe they meet in January.
Yep, I haven't got an invite yet, so I've not met him.
The Kuna Rec, Mark.
All right, so it was a good meeting. We have been, the board, the Kuna Country State Record Advisory Board has been meeting and talking about working with the local UTV club to look at a way to get the trail the safest way they can around the rec area, because obviously you can't go through the rec area. I would say it's been a from, I've only been on there for about, you know, like six months. I wasn't on this committee last year. But I found out, you know, over the last few meetings that this has been a discussion that's been going on for about five years. And it really didn't start getting traction until about a couple of years ago, I think, when finally, everybody just kind of got in one room and just kind of had it out. Nicely, respectfully, I think. And now I think we've got a very, they've, the two parties have done an amazing job of coming together. Anyways, so at our last meeting, we voted to support the trail that was, that was come up, that was duly brought up to and agreed upon by the UTV club and by the rec area advisory board. And now that is being sent down to the, you know, to the DNR for them to look at it. The hope is, is that they'll approve it. It'll be very, very, very beneficial to our area to have it. Because right now there's really no trail that gets you from like over by Riverton all the way over to this side of the, you kind of got to drive on the roads, which I understand that some of the roads are not well, you know, well-traveled, so it's probably not big of a deal. But that's not really conducive for people to want to use is to drive on the road. I mean, sometimes you have to, but we should have them off the road, which is what these two groups came together and kind of found places where we could take them off the road and put them like on a ditch or in, but some of the places are in the rec area by a very small margin, but it's in the rec area. So it needs to get approved by the DNR. So if you know your state legislator, you know, put some pressure on them. Because really, honestly, it's, it's a, the amount of time and effort that these two groups put into this, and how many concessions each group came up with, like really, they should be, we as community members should be so proud of these two groups because both of them could have came and basically just said, you know, the UTV could have come and said, you know, we're, are people going to drive there? It's tough. You know, the Kuna State Rec Area could have said, you know, well, we're just going to have the cops sit there and we're just going to write tickets. You know, but everybody said, you know what? Safety is the number one thing. And so let's, let's come up with a great plan. And this is this amazing plan. So more to come. So that's all I got.
Thanks. Paul Bunyan Joint Powers, I think you had a meeting, Tommy.
Yes, we did. Madam Chair, we met on the sixth. However, it wasn't as productive as I had hoped. What it was, was basically an organizational meeting outlining the roles of the executive director, the assistant directors, some of the other positions that, and support that they offer. But the biggest news was of this co-op, all the different school districts. There's one district that is thinking about venturing out on their own, and that's the Brainerd School District. So it's kind of up in the air on how that's going to affect us and affect the co-op if they withdraw from that and do their own thing. Sometimes it's beneficial for all these districts to be into this co-op so that they can benefit from the the support services that are offered at a reduced cost because of the co-op. But I think what's happening in the Brainerd School District is they feel that they can better service their own within in-house. How that's going to affect the rest of the co-op is kind of up in the air until we know for sure what's happening with Brainerd. But on the brighter side, there are some other districts that have approached the Paul Bunyan Education Co-op to inquire as to joining the co-op. So it might be a wash either way. So.
Tommy, who's in that right now? Us, Aiken.
Brainerd, Aiken.
Pequot?
Pequot Lakes and.
Pine River?
It's Pine, and Pine River.
Okay.
Pillager, too.
Oh, and Pillager, okay. So no Little Falls, no Piers? Okay.
They couldn't shine light on who these other districts were who were interested in joining the co-op, and I understand that. It's not as if they're going out trying to seek out these other districts. It's that district or those districts came to them. So.
Okay, okay.
That's all I have to report. Anything on that, Mr. Ollie? Did I miss anything?
Very well done, very thorough. I think this is going to be extremely interesting to watch. I would also highlight this is an extremely healthy process that the co-op is going through right now because it's been many, many years since they've done a systems check where they've really examined the staffing levels, the special education levels. Special education around the co-op around the state has significantly increased in the last ten, fifteen years, and it's been at least that long since the co-op has embarked on this type of a study. It will be interesting to watch. We will make sure Crosby Ironton students are represented, no matter the outcome of the study. But I appreciate you going through that and highlighting that there's some movement going on right now, and we need to pay attention.
Yep. Madam Chair, our next meeting is in May, so we'll have more to report.
How is that funded? Is that funded through the state, through the county, or co-op?
We've.
Districts?
Primarily funded through state aid for special ed and also federal special ed aid. So all of the member districts pool all of their federal special ed money to provide those, in particular, the low incident services that the special ed co-op provides, things like deaf, hard-of-hearing, visually impaired, and school psychologists primarily.
So if Brainerd pulled away, that would decrease our availability of services?
That would, that, they would take away their part of the funding.
But they also have.
Yeah. And they're going to try and explore if they can do it all on their own, and if they can, that's what they're going to do. But that's why I mentioned the other districts looking to join our co-op. It would actually be something that would help us.
You also have to think about, and I can't remember if it was something that you sent us, Ms. Ollie, but Brainerd has the highest number of use of it, too.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, so it's like, yes, they have more funding that they bring, but they also use a lot of that funding. So it might be a wash, per se, if they leave because they're using all, you know what I'm saying? So we're pooling it all together.
They would still get, they would still have access to the pool of money if they pulled away? No.
No, they would just get their own.
They would get their own.
Yeah.
But would the funding stay the same for all those that are involved in it right now?
That is what the, the group is Center for Effective School Operations. That is what they're determining through their study. So they're doing some cost-benefit analysis, if this, then this. If we bring on, then this, how does that impact Crosby's slice of the pie or the funding piece? And because we pay based on our number of students and our percentage, so our cost isn't as high as, you know, some of the bigger districts. But that's why I said it'll be interesting to see how this flushes out. And I believe, is it a January or February end date on the study? They had mentioned, I think it was February when it's going to be completed.
Seems like we've been doing studies and talking about this for years and years.
They have.
We have.
Interesting. Thanks, Tom.
Yep, thanks, Tom.
All right, we'll move on to seven point three, enrollment report. Mr. Tullison.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the enrollment report included in your packet is trending in a non-favorable direction. I would draw your attention to the line that says district total. And we started the year at nine twenty-five in September. In October, it was nine twenty-three. These are head counts. And in November, we're at nine eleven. You can see in the budget column that the budget is based on a yearly average of nine hundred and eighteen. And so we're presently, from a monthly perspective, below that. And if that trend continues through the rest of the year, that means that we likely have revenue overstated because we won't be able to maintain that average through the rest of the year. You can see the three-month average on the far right side is at nine hundred and twenty. And then below that, you can see the pupil units. So we were at a thousand six pupil units is what the budget is based on. We're at a thousand nine. Particularly in the buildings, you can see that both buildings have declined. The elementary school is about eleven students right now under the budget level point in time. And the decline from October to November, a lot of those students were moves out of the system, moves away from the school district, not just the whole family back to U-Haul and move, that sort of move. I think we had one or two children who had come from homeschool and went back to a homeschool sort of environment. They are attempting to make contact with them to fill out the survey. But in particular, those students that physically, or those families that physically moved, difficult to get a response. At the high school, we're down four students over the previous month and still maintaining above the projection by several students, four thirty-nine compared to four forty-three. So we'll be watching this through the month of December. We typically go into another slump. We typically go into another slump in January through middle winter and if that's the case will be, the news will not be as favorable and we'll be watching that as it impacts the revised budget. I'd take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Tullison?
So I know we're doing the surveys or sending them out for our CREST and high school. I do see we have a change, I mean, we did have an additional student, we have two students that left the preschool, are you sending those out for the preschool or can we, can I request that?
Yep, the one, we have two of them and they responded.
Oh, they did, okay.
Yeah, one was, they purchased a home out of town.
Okay.
And the other one was they, the parents chose to homeschool and didn't give a reason.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to eight. I need a motion for 8.1 to 8.3.
Make a motion, I'll sec.
Okay, I'm going to have Mr. Ollie pull up this month's monetary awards and donations. I normally, I don't want to do this, but I want to this month just because I think it's important for our public to see this. This month, we have over $111,000 that were donated to our school district. I know that the Booster Club is always looking for people to join the club, so I want to kind of point out them because they've got a lot there that they have donated. I just think it's important because we had our referendum and, you know, we all know how bad that was going to look if, so this just, in my eyes, proves that our community is definitely behind our sports and our activities that we have in our community, so I think it's important that we look at that. This slide is always available, people can look online when they look at our board packet also, so this is in that board packet, so anybody can look at it every month. So, yeah, I thought that was, I just wanted to point this out because it's high.
Even the charitable trust with all their scholarships and, and again, and their donation to Link Crew, just so important and the support is phenomenal, so we thank all of them, everybody for their donations.
Yeah.
So, I just.
Mr. Ollie, I have a question on one of these.
Mm-hmm.
The Wilbox County High School class of 2009, James Anderson Memorial for Athletics, was that Mr. Anderson that was the coach here?
Correct.
I think that's amazing that that high school class gave us $1,500 on behalf of Mr. Anderson, so I just wanted to say thank you to them.
Yep.
Great.
It was a good list. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Personnel consent items, 9.1 to 9.4, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say it's awesome to see all the new guys coming into the basketball arena to help Mr. Hoag, the new head coach, so just want to say thank you to all the gentlemen that have come forward to volunteer their time and to work with our youth, so.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Action items, 10.1, approve the following policies, second reading and adoption of revised policy 808, health and safety policy, second reading and adoption of revised policy 901, community education, second reading and adoption of revised policy 902, use of school district facilities and equipment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. 10.2, approve wrestling overnight trip to Thief River Falls for a two-day tournament from January 16th to January 17th, 2026. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. 10.3, approve phase seven and phase eight, summer of '26 and summer of '27, construction planning per the list of potential projects proposed at the November 10th, 2025 board work session as modified. Just a reminder, this is the work session summary, the green items that we discussed. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just would like to make a comment on this. At the work session, we, we had, went, tongue twister, Winsett Smith and Ulti here for, we met for almost an hour and a half, they went over all the different proposed deals as you're seeing up on the screen and all that and with a lot of discussion and were able to, under their acute direction of finances and program management over the last six phases, were able to still have some bond money left from that bond to move it forward into a phase seven and a phase eight and we never thought that we would be going that far out, really. So these dollars have to be spent and now we are, for the public, if you, it's interesting, so pull this up if you are interested in it. So there's some little things that, that, fine tuning, things that we want to accomplish over the next few years, so you see that it's proposed, it's a proposal, it's kind of still, you know, we could still massage it a little bit, we have the leeway to do that, so I do want to thank them as our firm over the past six years. Unbelievable what this facility has become. It really is one of the gyms of northern Minnesota, if not the whole state of Minnesota. So, I'm anxious to have our representatives here and that and have you guys give them tours of it because they're going to see, it's going to be a wow factor and I just, I encourage the public to look at it and to understand what we've gone through over the past so many years, so. That's that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 11, public comments. Again, if you have any comments here, please come to the microphone, state your first and last name. Please keep your comments to about three minutes if possible, don't use individual names and reminder, this is comment section, there'll be no back and forth talk with the All right, I don't see anybody coming up, so our next regular board meeting will be December 15th. Just note that that is not the fourth Monday, so just a note on that, November, or December 15th here in the forum room at 6:30. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Are we still, we have our work session the 8th then?
Yes.
8th and 15th, got it, okay.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.